All right, good evening. Welcome to the Select Board meeting of September 18th at 5:00 PM here at the Lakeville Public Library. Before we start, well, I'd like to call it to order at 5:02 PM. If we could start with the pledge of allegiance, so if everybody can please rise. Flag is out this way. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, the one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Member Candido is on her way in now. We have Member Day, Member Donahue, and Member Fabian with us this evening. First order of business, we have a list of questions in front of us as this evening is all about interviewing potential candidates for the role of Town Administrator here in Lakeville. So, we compiled some of these questions that we would like to ask the candidates, and I just want to make sure that everybody has the questions that they're interested on our sheet in front of us.
Yes.
Yep, you're good?
Yeah.
Are we gonna go in that order? I think so, I think so, and we'll just keep it, you know, smooth. So, I don't know that we'll get through all of the questions. Depends upon the responses that we receive from the candidates, but we'll just, we'll just keep rolling right through them until we get through as much as we can. So, I'll explain to the candidates this evening how this platform is going to work, so they'll, you know, have about five minutes. We'll be doing introductions, and I'll ask the candidates to have an opening statement, then in which we'll be going through our questions, and then about, you know, 15 to 10 minutes, you know, toward the end of the hour, we'll give the candidates an opportunity to ask us any questions that they would like, and any closing remarks that they would have. Did anybody else have anything that they wanted to add? I know, I'm excited about this, so I'd like to publicly thank the Town Administrator Search Subcommittee for, you know, successfully bringing us two, you know, candidates to interview this evening. I know it was a long journey for all of you, and, you know, a lot of work, but we want to say thank you very much for all the work that you've done. Chair, if you don't mind, could I read our letter to the board? Absolutely. So, in our packet, there was a letter from Chair Fabian, from the Town Administrator Search Committee, so yes, please read it into the record.
Okay. So, under the town's official stationery, it is addressed to Lakeville Select Board, Lauren Carboni, Chair, Brenna Donahue, Member, Maureen Candido, Member, Brian Day, Member, from myself, Leah Fabian, Chair of the Lakeville Town Administrator Search Committee, also Select Board Member. So, subject: Town Administrator Recruitment Date, September 12th, 2024. And the letter says, "On September 11th, Municipal Resources Incorporated (MRI) and the members of the Town Administrator Search Committee conducted interviews with five candidates as semifinalists. Each member of the committee prepared questions to ask the candidates, and our Human Resource Director compiled those questions into a spreadsheet for our review," for your review, I'm sorry. "Following the interviews with the semifinalists, the committee deliberated and agreed by unanimous consent to put forth two candidates to be considered by the Select Board. In no ranked order, the two finalists are Andrew Sukforth and Mark Craig. Enclosed, please find a copy of the finalists' resumes, the essay questions and their responses, and the list of questions that the search committee asked. Finalists are scheduled to be interviewed on Wednesday, September 18th, 2024, at 5:00 PM at the Lakeville Public Library Committee Community Meeting Room, and the Town Administrator Search Committee would like to thank the Select Board for allowing them to be involved in this important task for the town of Lakeville. Signed by myself, Chair, Chief Matthew Perkins, who was the Vice Chair of the Committee and a great big help to me and the Human Resource Director, Maureen Candido, Select Board Member, Nathan Darling, Building Commissioner, Katie Derocher, Member-at-Large, Lillian Drain, Town Clerk, Christopher Plonka, Finance Committee Chair." And it was a lot of time and a lot of hours put in, and I also just want to thank all those folks for their participation.
Just briefly, I'm very happy to be able to present these two outstanding individuals for consideration, and I want to congratulate them both at this juncture because they're both excellent candidates that brought them forward to this step in the process, and I look forward to hearing what they have to say today.
Yep.
So, our first candidate is scheduled to come in about 5:15 to meet with us, so. And I'd also like to thank our HR Director, Lacey Marshall, I know was really involved in the process with us, you know, getting this to bring us here today, so.
Is the board ready because the candidates are about to take their leave?
We have to wait till 5:15.
You have to wait, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I was going to ask him what his intermission is, with the preview turns out.
Well, we still have some time, so Brenna, can we go back to what your question will be, your first question?
Yes.
The good one down there, sorry.
Yep. Okay. Okay. You passed it down.
My other question, it didn't say anything.
Oh, okay. Just right. I just want to know if it matters.
And I only had two questions because I figured it would take us long enough to go through all of these.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 so I just did two, in expectation that that would be.
Just throw extra in case there was duplicates or something. I assume though, whatever number of questions we get through for the first candidate, we'll then have to stick to those for the second, so if they had faster answers, stop.
Right. Because if it doesn't necessarily take the whole hour, it's okay.
So, what we've done before is we just let everyone finish where they're gonna finish, and we grade them on what they've got, meaning, like, if they did 10 questions, they get graded 10. If they do 12 questions, they get graded on 12, you know.
The second question is about workload.
Okay.
The other person, my answer is workload is like, we're 10, so.
Just on the second question.
And what do you expect them to be, if they're high, like, what do you do to them?
Okay.
I don't want to discuss that. I don't want to go ahead or into the group. We're just kind of checking.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is it worth a reminder to the audience that there's no technical difficulties? We're holding the livestream until after both interviews are completed?
Yeah.
Just not to give anybody a leg up.
Obviously, I wouldn't post this to talk to the listeners, but to you, the candidates?
No. That's fine.
I mean, it wouldn't be up till?
Oh, you, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't be up till tonight, obviously, is that?
Yeah. I don't know when they came, you know, that's up till late cam.
Oh, okay.
Yep, so at least, you know, this segment is. Tonight recorded, so.
We'll do the best we can.
Okay. If not, then probably tomorrow.
Yeah.
Because you're not publishing anything this evening.
She might have to get it in this evening.
I usually wouldn't post it online this evening, but I believe.
The candidates won't change, though. No, candidates won't change. It should be fast.
So, should I read for late cam or no?
No, you do.
No.
Tell me for us.
Okay. Want to make sure.
We will not have anything up on Facebook tonight either.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Thank you, I've got my, my.
So, that would be a good question for me to ask at this time. So, late cam is recording this. Meeting. Meeting this evening. Is anybody else here recording? All right, for the record, we have the masked people recording.
Spoiler alert.
Figures the one time that you didn't, I didn't. I know, right? That's always the way.
Complaint from Arkansas.
Yeah, we'll just forget that there's, like, bold print in, you know, capital letters right here at the start of the agenda to remind me, but, yeah. I do too. I thought for sure it was gonna take a little longer, 15 minutes, I guess is enough time.
Basically, somebody actually put the arrows on here to tell us.
Yes. To what?
Like, part of my question, I wanted to ask him about this, where he said areas of opportunity in Ted Williams' Camden Library, I wanted to ask him what those are and what he was thinking.
Is that part of your, like, question, though?
No.
It was in one of his essays.
It was in his essay, and it kind of touches on the same topic, but I wasn't sure.
If you can connect it, that'd be good. Good evening.
Nice to see you.
Hey, Andrew, nice to see you.
Nice to see you too. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, Ben. Have a seat in the center of the room, please. No pressure.
Yeah, no, not at all.
Right.
Really glad to have you here. We have an hour.
Okay.
So, with that hour will be made up as we'll do introductory brief introductions, and we'll give you an opportunity to introduce yourself, opening remarks.
Okay.
Then we all have a series of questions, this isn't, you know, something that you're probably not unfamiliar with.
Right, right.
And then, what we'll do toward the end is we'll give you an opportunity to ask us questions, and give you a chance for a closing statement.
Sounds good.
That work?
Yep.
All right. So, if we can, we'll just go around, start over here, Leah, if you can just introduce yourself, please.
Oh, Leah Fabian, Vice Chair of the Lakeville Select Board, also the Chair of the Search Committee, sorry, there's a fly around here.
Yeah, it's been bothering me as well.
Yeah.
Brenna Donahue, I was elected recently for a one-year term.
Lauren Carboni, Chair of the Lakeville Select Board. Maureen Candido, Select Board Member and former TA, so I know where you are, I know where you're going.
Brian Day, Select Board Member, former Finance Committee Member, been involved in town politics for, oh, longer than I thought now, I guess, six, seven years, five, six years?
Yep, and a few years. Yeah, sure does. And, I'm trying to tell us, what about you?
Yeah, so my name's Andrew Sukforth, I grew up in Middleborough, Massachusetts, back in the early 1990s, lived here pretty much all my life, other than when I moved down to Virginia. First, I'd like to take a chance to say thank you for allowing me the chance for this position, as well as the search committee, they're watching, or behind me, I can't really see them, but just, Lakeville's one of those, just dream opportunities that only comes around every so often. I feel like it fits my skills and experience and temperament, I'm looking forward to discussing the opportunity in Lakeville in general.
Excellent. One of the things I forgot to mention, after we, you know, have a chance to meet the candidates this evening, you know, this particular board will, you know, will discuss the interviews and will possibly vote on, you know, an appointment, and so that will take place this evening, and I just forgot to leave that, share that with you, but anyways. So, really glad that you are here, and we're gonna go around the room a little bit here with some questions. So, please share with us what you know about the town of Lakeville.
Okay, so I've had family and friends living in Lakeville, worked in Lakeville going back, probably well over 100 years, so I've known the town pretty well, I've lived in Middleborough pretty much all my life, I've seen the issues when I worked in Middleborough, it was kind of like you always have an eye on the town next to you, what they're doing, what they're going through, so I've seen, I've always been paying attention, I know that you guys are looking to build a fire station, you're facing development issues pretty much all around town, so it's, I've known, I've known Lakeville all my life, I mean, I grew up with a babysitter right on Assawompset, and so I spent many summers there, I still go to Betty's Neck pretty much monthly, and I've, I mean, I've kayaked on Long Pond, I pretty much grew up playing baseball on Ted Williams' camp, so I've been familiar with Lakeville. Like I said, I mean, the schools are top-notch, the government has a strong reputation around, and I just hope to contribute in some way the best I can.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next, all right. So, from any of your prior work experience, don't feel you have a limit to covering anything, what successful group effort were you most proud to be part of, and why do you feel, or what do you feel made it work well? Happy to repeat it to you.
No, I got that. I would say probably the Green Communities Initiative. When I first started working in Middleborough as an intern, a big thing was the, to become a green community, we'd only passed one or two of the criteria, and I was basically tasked with, you know, getting it across the line. I didn't quite realize at the time how many people were involved in doing that, of course, it includes boards and committees, town meeting, obviously, and so we had a little bit of a failure with the stretch code, passing it originally, but eventually we, we kind of regameplanned, we didn't really reach out as well as we could have originally, so we kind of went back, we met with the Green Energy Committee, a very active group, and they really wanted to see us get to be a green community, so we worked together with them, keep them, it was constant communication back and forth with different people. When the stretch code failed at town meeting, we kind of like, what do we have to do? And so we reached out to the people that spoke against it at town meeting to see why, or what, what could we do better to change their mind? So, it was just a constant communication, just with everyone involved, eventually got it passed the next town meeting, we brought in the G and E, obviously had a huge involvement in it, they were critical in just everything involved with it, our local representative, Seth Pickren, was big, getting him on our side and helping us with the technical aspects, as well as serpent, they were beneficial, and so the biggest thing I learned is that you need everyone on the same page, working together for an effort, even just a small little, like, chink in the armor just can derail a major town initiative, and so, the, when it all came together, it was just one of those, like, you couldn't believe what teamwork really does.
Thank you very much.
Andrew, what methods would you use to develop trust with town staff, boards, and community members to further our own town goals of transparency and engagement?
Yeah, so a big thing I was prone of, and it just kind of came natural to me, I'm not like an outgoing type of personality, but I'll, I'll reach out to people, I'll talk to them, one-on-one or two-on, I haven't even been in a small group, but what, I don't know how it even came to me, I would, I would just go to different departments and just talk to them, whether it was the clerical, or the clerical staff, or it was the department heads, so it was something that I, I didn't realize at first how beneficial it was, but people, when you reach out to them, you act as a sounding board, they, they see you talking to them, they, I don't want, maybe they thought we were in an ivory tower, but when you reach out to them, you just, they open up, they tell you the issues that are going on, until you gain their trust, so I think there was at least one or two people in every department that would tell me how they're feeling, what the morale's like, and I would bring that back to the Town Manager's Office, and we'd basically gameplan, how can we fix the issues that they have, or reach out more or better, and so, there were some departments that maybe didn't really want us to tell you anything, but it was always a goal to just to get more engaged with that group and do better.
Brenna?
Hi.
Hi.
Lakeville has a unique semi-rural character that many residents cherish, yet we're seeing more development pressures. If you had a magic wand, what would Lakeville look like in five years, and how would you balance the necessary growth while maintaining the town's character?
So, I'd say the biggest way you're gonna solve that is with, obviously, implementing the master plan, I know you guys are doing that actively still, I've seen a few of their meetings, I think they're gonna be coming and potentially having some things at town meeting. I would say in five, I mean, so growing up across the way, and then also growing up doing stuff in Lakeville, you come to realize how beautiful, I would say probably the most beautiful, not just saying this, in southeastern Mass, all the ponds, you don't realize how beautiful they are, and any sort of development near them is just disastrous potentially, and so I think what, a couple of strategies we could use is a permitting guide, in Middleborough we had one that was like a, pretty much a point of contact you could reach out to, it also laid out what areas of town do you want to see change in, so developers would look at it and say, this, this is what the town's willing to, like, work with or target, but it also gave them a roadmap of what the town wanted to see and how it would get done. Part of that also, I thought was really beneficial, was to have a project review committee, it was pretty much, any major project, I forget the exact square footage, maybe over 20,000 square feet, developer would have to come in for a public meeting and basically explain what they're gonna do. It was open to the public, all our town department heads that had an interest in it, like water, sewer, highway, town planner, conservation, town manager's office, and they would, developers would explain to us what they wanted, what they wanted to see happen, and then we would tell them, this is what needs to happen, I mean, in certain instances, you guys have probably still seen it now, the train station in Middleborough, a developer wanted to come in and just build, build, build in the one little area, but there's no sewer, really, in that kind of area, and so, once they found that out, they kind of changed their plan, so I think that just making strategies proactively is a big step forward, I think, for a town like Lakeville. I've kind of just seen it where, it doesn't really seem to be like a strategy proactively, it just seems like developers are just coming in and picking just random spots and just saying to the town, figure it out on your end, and I think that's, I want to see Lakeville just be as beautiful as it can be, and then target the areas that you guys, and also the planning board, all, really, all citizens want to see.
Okay. Okay. So, Andrew, if you could tell us how you would adjust your communication style to effectively engage various stakeholders, so employees, boards, residents, so staff, so, including a social media presence, I guess I would say.
Okay. So, I think every town has a different kind of social media presence, they have their own kind of twist on it, I just moved to a town, Swansea, Massachusetts, that has a great newsletter that comes out monthly, and it pretty much takes everything in the town, it's like, if you didn't know Swansea, you move in there, like I did, you see this, and you feel like you know everything, you feel like you're an insider, just reading it, and I'd like to see Lakeville do something like that, obviously, all the departments are gonna have to contribute some to what that looks like, but I think, like, a monthly newsletter, there'd have to be probably a formal process set up with a board or a few employees that actually really put it together, but I'd like to see all departments kind of contribute in their own way to make it so that it's really informative to the public, I know Middleborough has kind of their own twist too as well, I'd like to see Lakeville kind of do, I mean, their own thing, but something that really reaches out, and really pin it to the website, send, maybe send it to the emails, I know Middleborough kind of did that, where they would, you could sign up and get it straight to your phone, I signed up in Swansea, I get the text message every month, and I'm like, can't wait, I mean, I live on Swansea Beach, and I'm like, I see these pillars going up, and I'm like, what is this? And then I get a text, and it's, I know what it is now, and so I'd like to see that happen, and just, people in Lakeville, they like, they need to know information, like anywhere, and I think that would be a beneficial, proactive way to let people know what's going on.
Okay. So, the Town Administrator has historically been appointed as the Town Smart Growth Reporting Officer. So, being that we currently have multiple 40B/40R projects completed, and there are three others under construction, please explain your familiarity and experience with 40B or 40R, and what you would bring to the table with regards to the coordination and reporting of these projects.
Yes, I've kind of mentioned a few things in the previous couple of answers, I would say a permitting guide, again, would be something that helps developers understand where the town's looking and what they need to do for each 40B, 40R, 40S, all of that, I would say this, the, maybe the transparency piece, where you see a public meeting and you see what's coming in, a lot of what happens is, you hear about a project like, let's say, Rocky Woods, just as an outsider, I didn't know what that was, and I go to the website, and it's hard to find really information on it, and so I'd like to see just a proactive information campaign, I know that the town's websites can be kind of rigid, but I'd like to see, like, you go to the website, and every single major project is listed out, whether it's a town project, whether it's a private project, sometimes residents might think they're the same deal, some, I've known people that think a major 40B is a town's initiative, it's really just the town's way of reacting to it, and so, I know there's a, there's a big push to change, maybe change the town planner role in Lakeville, and I think that's, it's probably, they're the main point of contact with the town, that'll help us get the best advice to the board, and they're, that's probably the best way to handle it.
Great, thank you.
So, I'm going to skip my number seven and go to 12, just so you know where I am.
Okay.
Okay. So, Andrew, how would you say your work for prior municipalities has prepared you for being the Town Administrator of Lakeville, and what would you say to residents concerned that you might want to begin mirroring Lakeville after larger municipalities that you've worked for?
What was that last piece of what, wearing?
So, what would you say to residents concerned you may want to begin mirroring Lakeville after larger municipalities that you've worked for? Lakeville after the larger municipalities you've worked for? So generally, there's sometimes a concern that you come from a larger place, you're gonna start doing those policies and things, projects.
Yes, I would say in Middleborough, it is a bigger community than Lakeville, about twice the size, population probably three or four times land-wise. Um, it has a lot of the same kind of, uh, issues. Um, but in Middleborough, we, it was kinda short on resources a lot. Um, in that position, we were responsible at the time for HR, um, grant writing, um, there was no facilities department, so we were making decisions on all facilities, um, budgeting. It was really like a, a hodge, hodge of just duties that the town manager's office was expected to do. And so we, I became more kind of, I wouldn't say an expert, but someone that knew a lot about a little different things and how a town works. And so, I always kinda felt that we were like a big medium-sized town, but I always felt like it was small. Um, and we were tasked with a lot. Um, the budget was what it was, but it almost just felt like it was small, not enough. Um, I, I view Middleborough and Lakeville kinda in the same manner, um, very rural. Um, I don't wanna come in and change anything. I don't really see that as my responsibility. Um, with you guys, I view it as carrying out your policies, initiatives, keeping you informed of what's going on. Um, Taunton is a great place to work, um, but I don't, I don't really view it as, I, I worked in Taunton, so I'm gonna change to Lakeville at Taunton. Um, I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna see that happen. Lakeville's got its own charming character, I don't wanna, I don't wanna change it, I wanna like, make it better. Um, and I'm not gonna do that on my own. I don't view the town administrator as someone that's a dictator, like five people are just okaying it. I want to help you guys craft and improve Lakeville how you guys wanna see it.
Andrew, this role will be an increase in responsibility from your current role. Can you tell me what, if any, change that will require in your leadership style and why or why not?
I would say, um, I wouldn't say any, any many differences in the leadership style. Um, leadership took its own, um, unique characteristics depending on who, who I was talking to or what I had to, um, do. Um, I was trying to highlight a few, um, points on with residents. I was the first point of contact with every, anyone in the town that came into the town hall. Um, I viewed the leadership that I needed to do was to get back to people. Um, I, I couldn't stand someone coming in, if I was at lunch and they left their number, I needed to call them back that day or the next day or I felt like I was failing people. Um, so I thought my leadership style there was accountable to the residents. I always, I hold myself way more accountable than anyone ever could, expect to hold me accountable. Um, and so, I mean, that, that, every initiative that we did, I always kinda thought in the back of my head, how would the residents view this initiative? How would they view how I'm handling it? Um, in similar way to staff, I would reach out to them constantly. I always kinda thought, if I'm doing this, can this, can this, does the staff understand why I'm doing that? Um, and so I, in the previous answer, I had said, I reached out to people. I wanted to know what they were thinking of things that we were doing, what the, I didn't want anyone to think we were just up at town hall and everyone else is at the annex and wondering what's going on. I wanted just my face to be seen. Um, so that was my leadership style, was to just be accountable to even to the staff constantly. I would go around probably once a week to every department. Um, and then to the board, I thought my leadership was, my place was to make what we called, we called a Team Middleborough, better. Um, and so we were tasked with a lot. We, we put together a strategic plan at the start of the year with a million goals and initiatives, and those were put back out every quarter, um, at a meeting like this. And you guys would see, what are we not doing? Or like, what's the status of X, Y, and Z? And I always thought, we need to, we need to complete what we have planned, or else, or not failures, but not helping Middleborough grow and do better. Um, and so, um, a lot of those initiatives were on my plate. And so I, I felt that I had to step forward, like green communities, um, CPA projects, capital projects, procurement. A lot of that was tied into that plan and I, I, I felt as a, as a leader of the town, I had to do that to make the town better. And, um, that's what I would plan to do here.
What's your ideal workload like in terms of zero being, you know, you sign one paper a day, and ten being you never sit down, sometimes even for lunch, don't feel compelled to get close to ten, this is an honest question. Um, and what level of work do you expect Lakeville to be at if you're hired? What do you, what number do you think you're stepping into?
Um, I would say right now and in the past, I would say a ten. Um, kinda go in the past into Middleborough, um, just, you walk in and there might be something going on, like immediately. Um, a constant thing I was handling was the, the facilities. So, it wouldn't be uncommon in the summertime, you come in, the annex is ninety-five degrees. And so I had to go, basically putting out fires constantly all day. Um, and so that was just, it was just accepted, like, like an accepted practice, um, just to be like a workaholic type. Um, I tried to pace myself. I took, I tried to take lunch, um, every day. Um, I would say probably now in Taunton, I would say it's maybe beyond a ten. Um, procurement's a new department, so there's a lot of responsibilities that have been kinda put on to that department. So I'm running around all day, I don't really eat lunch, eat too much these, with these days, but, um, a lot of it is just you create a, create a new procurement policy, you, uh, open bids, you're at a, trying to sell a piece of land, so you're at the site visit. Just, there's something new every single day. I would say, right now I'm at a ten. Um, but I don't expect it to be a ten all the time. Um, I'm trying to set up processes that never existed at the time, so I wanna make it more manageable for myself and different departments. Um, and so, when I come to Lake, or potentially come to Lakeville, I would probably view it as a ten the first year or two, because I wanna get myself up to speed on everything that's going on, just in general. Um, there's a lot to learn, there's a lot of departments, a lot of faces, people to meet, and, um, I'd like to just help people out. And I, I, my, my way of doing that is I get into the weeds on some things, if, if I'm asked. Um, and so I'd like, I like to know the details of every kinda project. And so, um, it might, it might not look like I'm a ten to like someone, but I'm always thinking of how can that project or how can that issue be solved? And so, definitely a ten internally.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. So, um, as you know, um, Lakeville is part of a regional school district that includes Free Town. Um, what do you see as the town administrator's role in regards to the relationship between the schools, our partners in Free Town, um, and how would you approach conflict between any of those stakeholders?
I would view myself as, um, a communicator to them. Um, I don't know if it exists now, but I would like to have a standing meeting with the superintendent and school business manager, and maybe a finance committee member, or even someone from the board here with them, maybe monthly, to see what's going on, what issues they're having. Um, just, I'd like to just communicate with them. I've, I don't, it might sound cliche, but I don't think I've ever really had a conflict with any coworker. Um, and so, I would like to reach out to them, be proactive in forming a friendship or a relationship of some kind, so that there's, there's no animosity. I know that kinda can happen with school committees and select boards and different people in town where just, they're hammerheads with each other. But I'd, I'd like to be someone that will serve as a catalyst for a positive relationship with them. Um, and when I, what I find out from them or issues, I would obviously communicate with the board so that you guys know what's going on over there. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good add to my other question. I'll just skip down. Andrew, what, um, what is one initiative, um, you've taken on in your career that was successfully implemented and shows a return on the investment? I know you did speak about the green communities, but I'm looking for more of something that you identified, you know, and took on that initiative.
Yes, so, uh, a big, a big deal in, in Middleborough was the CPA. I know Lakeville just recently passed that. I mean, Middleborough's been there for a long time and it's been built up. Um, so, a big historical resource in the town was Oliver Mill Park. Um, I know a lot of, um, in the past, it wasn't really funded and it got into a, a core shape. Um, and so we identified through the strategic plan that that needed to be, I guess, improved. Um, and so I was, um, the one responsible for reaching out to the different committees to get that done. Um, and so that included, obviously the CPA funded a, a big portion of it. Um, but it involved so many different stakeholders and departments that it was kinda like no one, everyone was afraid to touch it. And so it was, um, obviously the CPA, it was the parks department, it was conservation, um, it even had federal, um, Army Corps of Engineers involvement, uh, just people were generally involved, the select board had a, a big, big interest in it. And so no one wanted to touch it. And so I was just like, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do it. If someone has to do it, I'll do it. Um, and so I, I reached out to CPA, the, the step one and two, what needs to be done, and I just dove into it. Um, had, had capital planning, um, into it as well. And so I had to go to the capital plan and ask for money, do the, do the due diligence of what that needs, what that need to look like, what they were expecting from us, and what, what the, what the plan was. The big issue was if we do the first step, first phase, are you gonna do step two, step three, step four? Um, it's a big park, a lot of bridges and masonry that was needed. So it was, it was millions of dollars over a few years. And so, the first step was to, to the first phase. And that, it was, it was very overwhelming from the first part of it, but then we, we dug into it and solved the issue. And I thought I was kind of the glue for everyone to get together. Um, it was just my temperament on it. I wasn't like show up at noon time tomorrow and be ready for a site visit. It was, can you, it was just get everyone together. Um, I know there was some conflict amongst the group, but I was kinda like the, the one that could bring them all together.
It's a beautiful park, by the way.
It is, it's only getting better.
I'm gonna go to seven. Are we on time? You good on time?
Good on time.
Yeah, we're good on time.
All right. So, all of us have skill areas we'd like to improve on. Uh, if you had to choose, what, what skill would you like to improve yourself on? Examples could be leadership, communication, project management, time management, taking a lunch every day, your pick.
Um, it's something I've gotten better over the years, but public, um, speaking, I would say. It's funny 'cause I'm here now with you guys. Um, but it's, it's something, um, I get into the weeds probably too much on, on issues and I kinda maybe beat it with like a dead horse and people, people lose the, um, the ultimate message. So I'm always, I'm always like criticizing myself of not saying what really should be said to get the issue a point across. Um, that's kinda been improved in Taun, with my work in Taunton. I'm expected to show up pretty much weekly or every other week to defend issues or explain projects, present. Um, and so I'm constantly refining that ability, um, to do that. And so that's definitely something, going back to grade school, you know, uh, something I, I'm constantly thinking about even right now. And so, um, yeah, that's definitely something I think I can improve.
Thank you.
Yep.
Andrew, I didn't have a third one, though. I, I figured we'd run on time.
Andrew?
Um, yes, I do. Um, so, Andrew, um, what do you think are the top challenges facing municipal officials today? And what actions would you take to ensure the town government is effectively prepared to face these challenges over the next five years?
Um, it's a few different things. Um, kinda goes against the question, but I would say transparency within major projects. Um, I'm just gonna use the fire station as an example. I know it's a big project coming up. Um, it's very critical for the, the town. I've just, I've seen that fire station. It's obviously in disrepair and, um, I think it's something that the town's gonna decide on obviously very soon, next couple of months, uh, at fall town meeting. Um, and I think people like to know what's going on with it, what, what's, what's the, what's, how's it gonna change my life? Obviously, it's gonna be their checkbook. Um, that's just a necessary way of dealing with it. And so, a lot of people will look at many projects and say, how's this affect the bottom line in Lakeville? How's the, how are my tax dollars being spent? So, the, the biggest issue is trying to communicate the benefits to the residents. To some residents, they might never see a firefighter in their home in their lifetime. Um, but everyone cares about each other, looks like, like to hope so. So, um, their friends or relatives are gonna see a firefighter at some point, they're gonna be in need, and trying to communicate why my tax dollars need to be raised to help other people in the town. That's just a fire station example, it could be anything really, is how does it affect my, my wallet, but how does it affect my well-being? And how can the, really the organization of Lakeville communicate the benefits? Um, that's, it's a, it's the issue, the root issue at, at, at almost everything. People wanna know what's going on and communicating information can be tough. Um, there's not an answer to every single question people have, or not, not one that's gonna satisfy them. And I think what we can do to combat that is flood people with information. Everything we know people should know, is my opinion.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so, um, do you have any questions for us?
Um, a few, yeah. Um, I would say, is there any high priority for maybe, maybe personally that you wanna see Lakeville tackle in the next couple of years? Probably a tough question.
You're probably gonna get five different answers.
I know, my head's running right now.
I will always jump in because to go right off of what you said, there is a huge desire by the board to communicate with the residents. And you're absolutely correct, it's a completely different, um, environment. Even ten years ago, folks would show up to town meeting, raise their hand, and, you know, now folks want information and they have the, you know, um, they have social media, they have all that stuff, and they do really wanna know what's going on. So, um, I think that's one thing that, and as a board, we're gonna try to work on to ourselves as our own goal we have is to try to enhance communication.
Yeah, I think I saw you recently formed a outreach committee. It's a great idea.
Yeah. I know, I was just gonna say, I know, for me, I wanna identify massive revenue streams, um, income to our town so that we can take the burden off of our taxpayers. And I know infrastructure can be a, a challenge.
Right.
Um, and, you know, our community's beautiful and our master plan, you know, has spoken. The residents came in and, and that's the voice of what we've heard. Um, so for me, it's, it's trying to find that balance of, you know, where would be the best suitable places for, um, you know, high development areas or, um, you know, a lot of our residents are looking for smaller, um, like restaurants. They would like restaurants in town, that's a big thing. So I would, I would like to, you know, try to accommodate that as much as possible. But, yeah, I want large revenue streams.
I work very closely with a grant writer. I have most stuff that, she gets a lot of stuff, a lot of money, a lot of grant money, and I'm like, we have to do the procurement on it, and I'm like, we got this. And I'm like, I never heard of this. And it's like this great issue that I'm sure probably no one in this room even knows about. It's just, there's so much money out there that it's, it's incredible. And so I think there's a, there's definitely streams out there to get that, it's just identifying them. And I'm, I've accumulated a rolodex of people in my life now, um, so there's people I can reach out to that can identify where the town can get money from, definitely.
Thanks. Uh, if, if we kinda look inside our own house, right, not even, love revenue, however we can do that, without building though somehow. Um, if we look inside, you know, the walls of our little governmental house here, I'm, I really think there is a dire need for more efficiency. Um, we have a lot of great ideas, we have a lot of trouble executing them. There's a lot of things we've all said that makes a ton of sense, we need to do that. And then some other fire comes along and it just gets forgotten about.
Right.
And we're not held accountable to come back and work on it and get it done in a lot of cases. Uh, I mean, if you look at the early versions of the master plan, you'd probably say like, are they just replacing the years on this as it goes? Cause there's a lot of things that really... Because there's a lot of things that really haven't been brought to fruition. So I really am hoping that the town can find some more ways to be effective, communicate, remind ourselves that we didn't go and do that thing we said we're gonna do. You know, we should take a demerit for that and.
I think the strategic plan will be, that's something you guys will be interested in, is you write those goals down, and you hold everyone accountable for them. It's a, everyone writes them down, all the boards and committees, you guys, departments. And so they're written down and presented on. If you see inaction, 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 you're gonna wonder why are they, why are they not doing it? What can we improve? And I think that'd be a great, great initiative.
You touched on it earlier, it's balancing the rural character and some type of revenue stream or economic viability to put less liability on the individual homeowners and taxpayers in this town. Out of the box thinking, like, I think we've stretched ourselves as far as a tiny rural community can do. We're not that tiny anymore. So we really need to start kind of thinking a little bit bigger and a little bit broader, and trying to make some changes that are maybe, like, you know, less incremental and more impactful, and doing something to make sure we're supporting all the people of Lakeville that live here, especially our seniors. I always worry about the tax burden on our seniors, even like as it recently, as property values increase, and that burden increases on them. So, you know, finding ways to lessen the burden through either revenue streams or grant writing, which money not expended is just as good as money coming in, if not better. So finding ways to support programs and capital projects without funding it from our own budget will be a way to make sure that the taxpayers of this town know that we are really serious about being good stewards of their money, and that we really care about them. So I see that as a challenge moving forward, specifically because of the massive change in real estate values in the last three or four years.
Oh, yeah. I mean, the good thing is, solutions are everywhere in every town and city around us. I'm always, it might sound crazy, but I'm always walking at the news of what's this town doing? What is that city doing? And then seeing if that would work in Lakeville, I think it'd be a great, great thing. If it's a solution, someone's thought of it somewhere before. And so trying to mirror those approaches might be a good benefit.
I would like to see a successful and accessible implementation of accessory dwelling units, which can help a lot of people. Parents who have kids that don't want to leave the home but don't want to live in the home. Elderly people who can either live with family or rented out, you know, live in their dwelling and rent out their home, or vice versa. Just a way that can help people make money, similar to how big businesses are. And then the other thing is, I'd like to gear towards ecotourism. There is some land that can be developed, and we can do a lot with industrial and commercial, but I think ecotourism, Lakeville is the only town around that has the scenery that it does. We have, we're home to a drinking water supply for about five towns and a lot of people. And I just think that we could use some of that to improve trailheads and make people want to come here and spend money at our businesses and, you know, be here and have a slower off-season.
Yeah, I definitely understand that. Whenever I visit Lakeville, I'm always looking at trails. I know there's one over here I'm looking at doing at some point, but there's nothing online. If I didn't know it existed, I would, you would never know. I took my wife to Betty's Neck for the first time, she's like, where are you driving me? There's really no sign. And so I think some sort of branding on open space would be nice. People love the outdoors, especially more now so after COVID. So I think that's something, there's obviously grant money for that. I've seen towns that I've worked in get that money. So I think that'd be a great, easy kind of check early on.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you have some more questions?
No, I think that kind of, it was kind of an open-ended, open-ended one.
Oh, do you have something you'd like to say to us in closing?
Yeah, I just liked to again, say thank you for the opportunity. I know it's been a long process, but I know you guys are at a critical juncture in the town's history with the fire station, the old colonies coming up. It's gonna be a huge thing in the future. So I think, like, my skills and kind of life experiences and just overall temperament, I think I can bring people together and obviously help you guys out, reach and check off goals. I know you guys have a million of them, you just, that was just the top of them. So I think I can help, help in some way. That'd be great.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Pleased to meet you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. So it's almost six o'clock, and our next scheduled candidate is for 6:30 PM. So if it's all right with this board, I'd like to, I have 6:30.
Yeah, it's on the agenda, 6:30.
Okay. If the board is comfortable, we'll just take a break. I hope we'll take a break. Permission, I guess. It's 5:58. How does he deal with?
Push our hand sticky tape.
Off the course question, first question.
Well, good evening, Mark Craig. Very nice to meet you.
Thanks for being here.
Just want to go over just kind of what the next hour will look like. So in the first part, we'll take a moment just to introduce ourselves to you, and then give you a moment to introduce yourself and opening statements. And then, I'm sure you're not unfamiliar, but we'll be asking you a series of questions. And then toward the end, we'll give you an opportunity to ask us questions. And then with the closing statement.
Great, sounds good.
Okay. After the interviews are concluded, this board will take the opportunity to deliberate and, you know, talk about the interviews. Possibly tonight, we may vote to appoint a town administrator position. And I'm just aware we're at.
Okay, sounds great.
Okay, Leah, would you please?
You want me to go first?
Yes. So introductions.
Oh, introductions, sorry. So, nice to see you again. Leah Fabian, Vice Chair of the Lakeville Select Board, and I was the Chair of the Search Committee.
Brendan Donahue, Select Board, I was recently elected.
Ryan Carbone, Chair of the Lakeville Select Board.
Maureen Candido, Lakeville Select Board and former Town Administrator.
Brian Diggs, a board member and former finance committee member.
Sure. So my name is Mark Craig. I'm currently the Director of Human Services for the town of Foxborough. I, this week, will be celebrating 22 years of municipal service. I've worked in school departments, police departments, parks, council and aging, recreation, community programs, veteran services, human services. I've done a lot of different services as part of local government. I have a passion for local government, I love it. I'm a municipal dork, as I said in my screening committee interview. For the last six years, I've been with the town of Foxborough. First, just running the council and aging. I left Randolph to kind of sort of settle into the next sort of chapter of my life, started council and aging, and on day two, the town manager said to me, eventually I want you to look over and take over recreation, human services, veteran services, all at once. We have to build towards that. So didn't know that was a goal, but that was his goal, that was the first thing. So three years later, that was sort of the bigger role for me with the goal of opening eventually a community center. And for the last three months, I've also, I've said this in my screening committee, my resume is a lot of and then, and then, and then. So the last three months, I've been helping out the town manager, as acting town manager. And of that three months, 25 days have been as acting, which currently I am. The town manager is currently on vacation, she has been for a week and a half. So day-to-day operations are through me. It's a great service for her, makes it so she can enjoy her vacation and kind of go off, and I get a little bit more experience in my own role, too. So as a whole, again, 22 years municipal experience, it's something where I've worked for the towns of Hanover, Marshfield, Randolph, and Foxborough. I've worked in town administrative form of government, city charter form of government, and currently with the town manager, strong town manager. The last time similar government to Lakeville was when I worked in Hanover as an under administrator. Great system, worked for the town, I'm sure it works well for you guys, too. So I've worked in all three different forms of government.
Great, thank you. So Mark, please share with us what you know about the town of Lakeville.
So from what I know from Lakeville, up until two months ago, was very, very little. I've dived right into learning a lot about the community, I've watched a lot of your Select Board meetings. I've gone back and read even economic development surveys back from 2014, which I think generally reflects what I heard from the screening committee of wanting to keep the town rural, wanted to keep the town sort of a hidden gem. And I said in my screening committee, it's something that, it truly is a hidden gem. You know, most people either just drive by on 495 and don't know much. But once you get off the highway and you start exploring kind of the back roads, it's something special. It really is, it's, you know, quiet town, has some really unique parts with the Ted Williams Camp. It's just a very, very nice town. But I also understand the desire to keep it rural. Something that drew me to the community is the expansion of this board from three members to five members, looking for kind of a new day in Lakeville, and I would, something that I would love to be a part of.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Mark. The answer could be from any of your prior work experiences, it doesn't have to be the 22 years of municipal work. What successful group effort were you most proud to be part of, and why do you feel it was successful?
Yeah, so I'm gonna choose most recent group effort. So when I was hired for the town of Foxborough, and actually heard from one of my staff members today that they were nervous. I came in, I was the younger guy taking over council and aging. They didn't want change, they weren't looking for change, but the town manager wanted change, and that's all that really mattered at the time. So my goal was to sort of build upon kind of small success that the department had and really change slowly everything. They didn't know that at the time, but six months in, we had many more programs, many opportunities. We've changed the culture of that. And within six months, I came from seniors really liking their small little space to wanting a full intergenerational community center. And the last four years, COVID took a little bit of the steam out of that, building towards that. So part of that was gaining support from Recreation Board, which, you know, had operated out of a garage for a long time, and they were happy with that. They didn't want a community center. But, you know, through many public meetings, through many infot sessions, feasibility studies, we were able to gain support from seniors in the community, younger members of the town, to something that was never really envisioned before besides the town manager, to the town purchasing a church, Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saint Church, a few months ago, to opening a community center in just a few short months. So it wasn't in the cards to build a $16 million building. We tried, it didn't get to town meeting because it was stopped along before that because people started looking at the bond schedule and realizing I didn't want to take on any additional debt for that kind of project. So that was a blow to the project, but realizing that we needed to group everyone together to, you know, if this was ever gonna get done, we had a great opportunity with purchasing a church.
Thank you very much.
What methods would you use to develop trust with town staff, boards, and community members to further our own town goals of transparency and engagement?
Sure. I think that the last word was really the key, it's engagement. I like to make sure that everyone is engaged. You know, there's the regular citizens who will come to every single meeting, and their voices will be heard time over, time and time again. So making sure that all voices can be heard, even those quietest voices. Sometimes it's much harder to get the quiet voices, but their voices are just as important. Whether it's sending out surveys either through the schools, through email blasts, having a social media presence, making sure that everything on the website is up to date so that way information can be had. I'm also a big proponent of meeting people where they are. If there's a group that meets, I will admit that I came to the library last week to sort of scope out where the interview was, and there was a homeowners association meeting here. If that means going to homeowners association meetings to sort of gain input from people who might not come to town meetings, that's just something that has to be done. We want to hear from every single voice in the town. I think that that's very important, is what sort of changes the culture of the town and continues with that engagement. It's important to hear from everyone.
Lakeville has a unique and semi-rural character that many residents cherish, yet we're seeing more development pressures. If you had a magic wand, what would Lakeville look like in five years? And how would you balance necessary growth while maintaining the town's character?
Sure, so I will say that I think that, according to the charter, I think it's the administrators, I don't think it's the administrator's role to have the administrator's opinion put onto the town. I think it's more taking guidance from this board, from all the other boards in town. What I think is really nice about Lakeville as you come in, is development as you, on the outstretches, and then as you come further into the center, it becomes that kind of really, really quaint New England-style town. I love that. I love as you drive along the pond, there's long stretches before the next house. But if you're going up by the train station, there's businesses, right? There's Walgreens, there's everything you need to get sort of on the outskirts of town. But when you get to the center, it's very rural, and it's really interesting. I like that a lot.
So how do you adjust your communication style to effectively engage various stakeholders? So employees, boards, residents, and including the use of social media?
Sure. So I'll start with employees. The joke around my office is that when I first sit down in the morning, it's kind of a revolving door. Everyone's sort of checking with me, checking how the day was before, seeing how things went. I have employees in other areas around town. The first couple of hours are phone calls, hey, how's everything going? What was your, how was your rec board meeting last night? They all check in with me. First, it was by nature that they felt like they needed to, and now it's just sort of check-ins to see how, what they're up to, what's the next project, and how, more importantly, how can I help? That's sort of what all staff have come to realize, that I'm there to do my job, make sure that everything's running smoothly, but my bigger job is to make sure that my staff are doing their jobs well with my assistance. What can I do to make their job easier so they can get their tasks done? With the community as a whole, I think there's definitely importance of social media. There's younger members of the community that might not want to come to a Select Board meeting, and might not be able to watch it on Lake Cam, but to reach out, have information out for the public, even if it's just as simple as, and I said this during the screening committee, if a police officer is being promoted as lieutenant, there should be a picture on the town page. So that way, everyone knows who that person is, they can be proud of that person, it's probably a local person, and then it sort of just spreads that good news. It can also, anytime there's sort of something they need to solve, right? If there's a problem that needs to be solved, if there's a hearing coming up or you might need to talk about upcoming development, the more publicity, the better, to get as many people in the room to actually talk about whatever the issue is.
Okay, thank you. So the town administrator has historically been appointed as the town's Smart Growth Reporting Officer. Being that we currently have multiple 40B, 40R projects completed, and there are three others under construction, please explain your familiarity and experience with 40B and 40R, and what you would bring to the table with regards to the coordination and reporting of these projects?
Sure. So I don't have much experience with 40B, 40R. I understand what they are, I understand Lakeville is one of the few communities that adopted 40R in 2019, I believe is when Lakeville adopted. My experience is more in the communication out to the residents. So I liken this to a project, so if you're familiar at all, MBTA Communities is a zoning law that's passed down through the governor recently. The town manager, and she was also the town planner at the time, asked me to get as much information out to the community as possible. There's lots of preconceived notions of increased zoning, of very, very dense zoning up by the train station at Gillette Stadium. And we also knew that it just needed to pass. The governor said, this needs to be passed, or you're gonna lose out on lots of grant funding. So we just needed to get the information out there. Not for the town's pushing for MBT communities to be passed, but we needed to get accurate information out there. So designed a postcard, we had some grant funds to get out to every single resident town, so that way every resident could at least understand what is. They can have their own opinions on if it's good for the town or bad for the town, but educating the residents is the most important part. I think that's very similar with 40B. Educating residents to make sure they. Educating residents to make sure they understand the impacts of the community, whether it's to the schools, to the budget, or even to their own neighborhood, making sure that everyone understands it has the actual information rather than just sort of their preconceived notions. I think it's better for the community to understand that, so that way, if there's any sort of votes in the future, they can know all the information.
Okay, thank you.
So are we going back to 12 again?
Sure.
Mark, how has your work for prior municipalities prepared you for being the town administrator of Lakeville? And what would you say to residents concerned you may want to begin mirroring Lakeville after larger municipalities you may have worked for?
Sure. I definitely don't want to do that. So I, you can tell, I've worked for towns Marshfield, Hanover, Randolph, Foxborough. None of them are the same. And if I went to Randolph, if I went to Foxborough and said, I want to make Foxborough like Randolph, I would have run out of town. Same thing when I moved from Hanover to Randolph. If I said I want to make Randolph like Hanover, would have been run out of town. Every community is unique, every community is different. It does take a little bit of time, probably about six months, to really understand a community, what their needs are, and not just from the policymaking boards, but really the individuals in the community. So you can, the easiest way is going to a senior center lunch and hearing from seniors that have concerns. They might not come to a meeting, but hearing from the concerns directly, and then sort of moving forward with whatever the plan is. So I would never try and make Lakeville like Foxborough. Two very different communities. There's some similarities. Foxborough might be known for Gillette Stadium, Patriots Revolution, but very similar to here, there's this concern for constant growth. The residents want, a lot of the residents want to see the community like it was maybe 30 years ago. They've seen a lot of growth up in Route One and are disappointed by that. They want to see sort of rural areas like you have here in Lakeville. Foxborough is one of the few towns, the few cities where you can look down from a pro stadium and see cow fields, and they like it that way. And that's going to be like that way for a very long time.
Okay.
I just double-checked in case we have to have the order change. This role would be an increase in responsibility from your current role, even though acknowledging that you are doing it as a fill-in role there. Can you tell me what, if any, changes that will require in your leadership style, and why, and why not?
So I have thought of this over the weekend. So my leadership style is hands-on, but not micromanaging. I have a wide range of staff. I have staff members who are in their late 70s, at the very tail end of their career, and I have employees that are 14 years old. If I led them the same way, I would be of colossal value, right? So like I said, lots of employees come in, they check in with me every day. I understand with the larger staff, that might not be possible, but I think regular check-ins are very important for me, for the staff member, and for the overall success of the organization. So I understand that I won't be able to talk to every staff member every single day. I think I'll just have to deal with that. I'll be okay with that.
What is your ideal workload look like, in terms of zero being, you know, you sign one piece of paper a day, 10 being you don't stop working even on your lunch? What's your ideal day?
20.
Okay. And then, sorry, it's a two-parter. And then what level of work do you like to, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm reading this wrong. And what level of work do you like to work at, and what do you expect Lakeville to be, should you get the job?
Sure. So it's a half joke, but it is serious. I like my workload to be at 20. And like, one of my staff members kind of joked a few weeks ago, and said, you could have just come in here and kicked your feet up in the desk and still collected your paycheck, but that's not me at it, Mark. And she, her job has changed immensely since I started, much more work, and she kind of was lamenting that. But at the same time, I want to stay busy, and if it's something where, if there's a moment of boredom, I'm going to find seven other projects that no one knows about yet, so that way I can support the select board better, or any board better. That would be my goal. It's also a little bit how I function. I have, you know, I have my technology, I have my notes for what's happening next, but I like to have a giant whiteboard in my office that says, here are the functions that need to happen, here's my to-do list. So that way, if I'm working on a project and I have a moment of breath, I'll look at a whiteboard and say, okay, yeah, those are the other 10 other things that need to get accomplished today. For Lakeville, I hope that it's that way. If it's not, I'm going to make it that way. If it's something where it's not busy every single day, I'm going to find projects, I'm going to find grants, I'm going to make it so that way next year's budget cycle's easier because I have many more grants coming in that might not be attained right now for Lakeville. That would be my overall goal.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Mark, I think you know that Lakeville is part of a regional school district with Freetown. What do you see the town administrator's role in regards to the relationship between the schools, our partners in Freetown? And how would you approach conflict between all the stakeholders?
It's my job to represent the town of Lakeville. That's my priority. Obviously, it's constant communication with Freetown, with the school board, especially when it comes to budget time, but that's not all. We don't just talk just during budget season, we talk year-round. Any sort of major project, I want to make sure that the select board is kept aware of it, make sure that everyone in the community is kept aware of it, especially those who might not have children in the schools. If there's some sort of capital project, seven years on the horizon, I want residents to know about it now, so that way they can be prepared for that, whether positive or negative, if it's something they're actually interested in. But I think it's something where communication has to be. I will admit, my wife is the teacher, so I understand the daily rigors of schools. She's president of the union, so I understand the union negotiations between schools and school committees and the town as a whole. And it's just something that, especially with the regional district, you just have, it's just more players in the same game.
Okay. So what is one initiative that you've taken on in your career that was successful, successfully implemented, and shows a return on the investment?
There's a lot, so give me one sec.
That's okay. Take as much time as you need.
So, okay, so I'm going to, this is going to be very tangential and very, much does not correspond with the town administrator duties, but I think it's important. So when I started in Randolph, responsibilities included an ice rink, a pool, a recreation apartment, playgrounds. And Randolph is a community that maybe 30 years ago were very interested in hockey. Now, not so much. It's a changing community, very first-generation Americans that grew up in countries without hockey. But we had an ice rink, and that was never going to change. We had to figure out a way to make that rink the best for the town. So what I started to do is offer free programs for children from Randolph to use the rink, and really charge, put a serious up-charge on residents from Braintree and other surrounding communities to use the rink. And in turn, the funds that came from that, I then spread out almost like a little bit of Robin Hood, taking from the richer communities, giving out to the poorer communities, put out a lot of free programs for the town, for the residents of Randolph, using the funds that came in from other towns, with the idea that if we, if the town was going to own an ice rink and not use it a lot, it was going to be a tremendous asset for the residents. We were able to improve the pool, improve parks, and offer many free programs just by charging another community rental rates.
Sorry, just jotting down those here. All right, it's about, going back to seven of the week. All right, Mark. All of us have skill areas we wish we could improve on. If you had to choose, what kind of skill would you yourself like to improve on? Could be leadership, communication, project management, union.
Right now, I would say my weak point is probably zoning, especially when it comes to agricultural zoning. A few meetings back, someone had talked, started talking about agriculture zoning, actually, Mr. Day, I think it was you, and I was lost. It's not something that I've ever worked with before, it's not something I know, doesn't mean I can't learn, but at this point, that would probably be my weakest point.
Okay.
Uh-oh. Mr. Max.
I think I've got both one. Both mine are done.
I think it was you or Leah had a question.
Yeah. So, okay, because Maureen didn't have one.
That's right, I just did two.
So what do you think are the top challenges facing municipal officials today, and what actions would you take to ensure the town government is effectively prepared to face these challenges over the next five years?
Number one challenge is burnout for municipal employees. I'm not sure if that's, you know, local to Lakeville, but I can say as a whole, working in the industry, it's burnout. It sometimes can be a thankless job. Sometimes we get lots of thanks. If we improve a new project, if something gets passed that the community wants, everyone loves it. But there's lots of times that difficult decisions have to be made, especially when it comes to budget, especially when it comes to taxes increasing. That can be hard, especially on employees who, you know, a police officer, that someone will come up and say, my taxes pay your salary. There's nothing that takes the morale out of a town employee than hearing that phrase, but it is the truth. That is the truth. Taxes do pay a salary, and sometimes, I will admit that I've just sort of taken a little bit more flack from a resident because they're right, that their taxes pay my salary. To be better prepared for that, it's building better leaders, building leaders who are prepared for that. So I've taken part of the Suffolk Municipal Management Class, both in the sort of general certificate program, the financial management program, and that's become a major impact of that project, that program. So one of my friends took it seven or eight years ago. There was nothing in there about sort of work-life balance, there was nothing in there about sort of managing expectations when it comes to residents. Now, a fair amount of the class is that, and realizing and understanding and working with colleagues, that it's just to be expected that there's going to be challenges every day that residents have, and we do better prepare for that, and also prepare for the outcome if they don't like the results.
Thank you.
Okay. So at this point, I can ask you to take a moment, and I have a few questions left.
Sure. So my number one question of the week, I would love to know your goals for the town for the next five years.
Well, we can use the same format.
Yeah. So I'll start, and I will say that communication is one of the biggest areas that we need to work on. We haven't done much with social media. We do have a website that contains everything, but, you know, folks typically go to social media, and it's not always necessarily what the town's, you know, offering. But, you know, also, we just need to make sure that our staff know what's going on. So for me, it really is about communication. I know we have, we've created a small committee to be working on that, so, and I'm looking forward to the work that that committee will do, but that's definitely, you know, for me, one of the things that needs to be worked on.
Thank you.
And for me, it's about generating oodles and oodles of revenue, lots of revenue, trying to identify ways to lessen the burden on our taxpayers. As you know, we're rural Lakeville. We speak to our, through our master plan, and our residents have indicated that they would like to keep the community the way it is, but they would like to have small business, restaurants. Infrastructure can be a challenge. You know, we don't have our own water, you know, we utilize, you know, water from other communities, but how do we identify lots and lots of revenue? So that's my goal.
Was it me?
I think it was Brian.
Oh, okay. So can I give you a two-part answer, based on the way that you asked the question? You know, five years from now, I want us, or even nearer term, I want us to really address what I consider a lot of inefficiencies just in the operation of our government. We don't tend to come back to things we say we should do, we don't get a lot of things done that we'd like to, because the next fire came along and kind of deviated us off that path. So I'd certainly like to see us more focused on being held accountable by whomever the next TA is, to say, hey, remember, folks, you said you wanted to do this, where are we? I'm also concerned, and you mentioned burnout, so I'll kind of go back to that. We're starting to get complaints from residents that services are taking too long to be delivered. The town's gone through an incredible level of growth, where departments really haven't seen an equitable amount of growth to keep up with it. So we've still got a lot of like, single-person departments out there. So I really like to see us go through kind of a rightsizing exercise to say, we're growing at this incredible rate, and, you know, we've got multiple hundred-unit developments coming. Where do we need to be in those five years to provide you the level of service that you're expecting? Because I just don't think that we're going to be there in the next five years. I think we're going to see a lack of what people consider quality service.
Okay, thank you.
Balancing the rural with the economic development, we're asking the impossible. So we want to be able to maintain that rural character, but we want to look for other revenue streams to continue to be good stewards of the public money. Making sure we're being judicious with the funds that we spend, and looking for solutions like grants, or the out-of-the-box funding that you had mentioned, where we're able to leverage something we have in order to support things that we need. And we're coming into a scenario where a lot of the brunt is being put on the individual homeowners, and a lot of these individual homeowners are elderly or older, and that with the cost of housing, and the way that has built up over the last few years, is making it really hard for our seniors to live. And I want to find ways to defray those costs as directly affecting our seniors, or offer more services that help them. And in that vein, and just being good stewards of the money that we've been tasked with spending, and spending it in the right way.
I would like to see the successful implementation and accessible implementation of accessory dwelling units. We don't have many young families with kids. I think that number's going up, but it's hard, of course, to afford a home right now. So where we have people who want family close, or like we mentioned, elderly, I think that would be a way to help them. And then I would also like to see a turning of ecotourism. So as you mentioned, Lakeville is kind of ringed by industry and then has that center that's more rural. I think we could capitalize on that, whether it's developing trail systems, hosting conferences. We go to the fire station, we could do first responder conferences, just utilizing the open space as our moneymaker, as opposed to, you know, automatically jumping to other, not that those are bad, or we shouldn't pursue them, but like you said, the town just has that quality, and ecotourism could thrive.
Love that. If you have a few seconds, can I respond to some of those, or are you trying to end?
No, this is my time.
So communication, I think that it's the major driver. Social media is a definite, like I said before. The inefficiencies, local government, you know, reducing the inefficiencies is the key. Whether it's, I'm a big proponent of what I sort of deemed as, you know, people being town-hauled, and not saying for Lakeville, but some towns, you know, someone will walk in to try and get some service, well, no, you have to speak to that person down the hall, oh, no, you have to speak to this person, and it's what every resident knows, is they're sort of being shuffled, the town all shuffled back and forth. So sort of, my departments have always instituted that, if someone comes to you and it's, they're asking a question for a different department, you either know a little bit of the question, or you walk them to that station, help them get the answer, so that way if someone else comes and asks that same question, you know that, so kind of reducing that inefficiency. And then I think that us also providing a roadmap to try and figure out, you know, where we are five years from now, what kind of services are needed, so that way it's not just, oh, we need to add 10 more employees next year. No, we should know, okay, year five, it might be 10 employees, but how do we back that out and see what year two, year three, and what we can get in the next five years? Then sort of balancing the rural, and I think that that's, it is definitely looking for grants. There are a lot of grants out there. Grants take time, grants take resources, and they take some Grants take resources, and they take someone who's willing to champion them. That's me. I will admit that I love applying for grants, because it's statistics. I love statistics. I love keeping data. I love performance management data. I like knowing, okay, so if we didn't get a grant this year, what were they looking for, so that way next year I can apply for that. So, recently, the town got a, the town of Foxborough, about a grant for accessibility and doing an ADA transition self-evaluation transition plan. The town manager at the time, she was the town planner, applied for it. When you became town manager, she said, "Mark, here you go. I'm the town manager now. You need to run with this and perform this, because the state basically gave us $150,000 to perform this ADA accessibility and transition plan," which every town is supposed to do. We hired a consultant. They came out. They, it was a lot of work, having them evaluate every single building for inefficiencies, but now we're eligible for more money. We're eligible for $250,000 next year to then fix those problems. Even new buildings that had been built five or six years ago, there was problems with sidewalks, there was problem with, you know, even eaves between rooms, to try and find the grant. So, a grant to get the service, to get the grant, it's cyclical. For the ADUs, I love it. It's something that's, the town of Foxborough tried to put ADUs on town meeting about a year and a half ago. Overwhelmingly voted down. Everyone was against it. All of a sudden, the governor comes out and kind of puts it as a by right. You know, we still have some, have to wait until February for the final information, but now everyone loves ADUs. It's very interesting talking to seniors that they didn't understand it two years ago at town meeting, but now when they see that, it's just sort of by right. Because we also know by now, there's been a little bit more research and realize that that doesn't mean, because it's cost prohibitive, just everyone, not everyone's going to build an ADU to then rent out for people that go to Patriots games. It's going to be people who more than likely need it, whether they're trying to find an aging parent, or a younger person who, rather than live in the basement, they can live in their own, they can't afford a brand-new house, maybe they can live in a tiny house. Love that idea. So, again, now that it's sort of semi-forced or thrust upon communities, it seems to be overwhelming acceptance, because it's also known that not everyone's going to be able to have one. I think that's it, but that's it.
Do you have some more questions for us?
Just one. It's sort of more, if you haven't figured it out by now, I'm, I try to be a very positive person. I'm big into positive workplace culture. I'd love to know, it doesn't have to be for everyone, I'd love to know what the culture of the workplace is, what the culture of the town of Foxborough employees are.
Lakeville.
I'm sorry. I know what Foxborough is.
Get the gong.
I think Lakeville employees appreciate, like, the closeness, the family. Almost every single person knows everyone else in every department. I mean, DPW, police fire have gotten a little bit bigger, and they're a little bit more removed, but for the most part, you know, everyone really does know each other, and we sort of, they know us, too, you know. They like seeing, people have told me, "We like seeing you. We like seeing that you don't just sit at the pulpit and preach. You actually come in and talk." So, and it's very, it really is very family-oriented, and that's super important to me, to try to maintain that. Doesn't mean we don't have our issues, but...
Yeah, and I will admit that if I'm successful in this plight of being your next town administrator, I want to be part of that community. I want to be part of that culture. I watched the last year's select board meetings, and you're approving fall festivals that I would love to go to. It's something, if I'm part of a community, I dive right in. It's not where I come to work in the morning and see in the afternoon. I want to get my dry cleaning there. I want to get my hair cut there. I want to bring my family to fall events. I want to really be enveloped in the community, while I won't live here. It's something that I want to be part of the community and make sure that I understand everything in the town. I understand what the community thinks like, so that way I can properly advise you all as, "Here's what I heard at whatever such-and-such event. This is the great way, I heard complaints of whatever, but it cycles." That way you can make informed decisions moving forward. So, I'd love to be part of that.
Go ahead.
Tailing on to some of the previous comments, I think whomever gets this position will find is that first one or two department head meetings, right? The first one's always going to be that awkward ice-breaking thing, but you'll likely quickly find that it's very much a family atmosphere. They'll all joke around with each other, but then when business needs to get done, business needs to get done, and you'll see ways that they will reach out, you know, looking to you for assistance, but it's assistance. They don't want to be told how to do their job. It's more of, I think, what you said earlier on. And the departments go out of their way to help each other if they need something. They help the community when they need something. There was just a big festival over the weekend, and, you know, on top of the organization getting police details, DPW's helping out by putting cones out, and like, the fire department will show up to do community engagements. You'll see that there's definitely a lot of wanting to give back to the community, and even when they might not have the resources to pull it off, they somehow continue to find a way. I don't know how they're doing it, but they do. And we've got kind of the islands of different areas, like our inspectional services at the old Carnegie Library, and we've got a brand-new DPW administrative building, and they just get stuff done. They really, it's nice to see how, this probably sounds a little weird given the position, but almost how little oversight they often need, but they're willing to come and ask for help if necessary. If there's a big thing that needs, you know, collaboration, departments will get together and do this. Or you could, but did you think about that? Or no, we can't do this. So, they're willing to work with each other to kind of come up with the best outcome for everybody if possible.
Sounds like a fantastic team.
Truly.
Pretty lucky.
Really is. It's a team of, you know, just dedicated staff, you know, with minimal turnover. But I think that, you know, just about in any type of environment, you know, having fair and equitable practices in place. I know that there's been some challenges with us trying to, you know, make sure that that happens, you know, across the board. So, the family approach from, you know, our staff is, you know it. You walk in, there's that familiar face, and I think that they, you know, appreciate the fact that they do know us, and, you know, we are approachable, and I think that they can appreciate that, too. But if I had to be on an island, I would bring my staff, the staff of the town of Lakeville.
That's great.
I'd figure it out.
Really do.
So, to piggyback up from Brian and Maureen, they're experts in their role. So, they want to be listened to, and they want you to leverage their expertise when you're making your decisions. You're going to have the authority to make the decisions, but you might not always have the expertise that goes along with it. So, being able to partner with and have that full circle of, you know, what it's going to take to get that done and be able to work collaboratively is really going to be a boom. And then just being able to give them the tools to support them, and supporting them in situations where it could be difficult for them. Sometimes there's hot seat. You know, sometimes there's things going on where the public is not happy with them. Make sure you're there, like, you know, holding it down with them, making, validating, you know, that they're doing a good job, that you really can't be a perfect person while serving the community. If you get 50% of the people 50% of the time, that's kind of a score. So, just making sure we're avoiding those things like burnout, and that they do feel the support, and that you're rooting for everyone to win.
So, I think you've just defined me perfectly. I'm always a champion for my staff, even when a difficult conversation has to happen for whatever reason. We still both walk away positive, happy about the experience. I've had very, very, very little turnover in all of my departments over the last 15 or so years. It's extremely rare, but if it is turnover, it's usually for someone moving on to a better environment, a better experience, better job, bigger job. And for that, I'm always proud of them. I just had a recreation director who moved on to a bigger town. She was nervous to tell me. She thought I'd be let down, and I couldn't be more proud of her. It's something where she's moving on to a bigger experience, where she has a bigger staff, and I think that that's sort of the goal, is sort of mentoring staff that might be interested in either moving up or moving into bigger roles. If there's a retirement three years down the road, and you have an assistant director who's ready to take over conservation in three years, let's mentor that person, so that way they're ready for that role. So...
Go ahead.
One other thing, if I may.
Sure.
Because I do consider them almost like extended staff at this point, but the town thankfully also has excellent working relationship with Representative O'Ro, who's in town, and Senator Roderick, who's based out of Westport. They're always there, going to bat for us, even at the federal level, our representatives are great. So, they always answer the phones, they always get back to us, they find the resources we need. So, if we don't have it locally, they sometimes can go to bat for us at the state level and get some amazing grants and monies for us, and get projects done that we otherwise had no opportunity.
Yeah, those earmarks really come in handy whenever you need them, right?
Yes.
And that, the relationship with state federal delegations is invaluable. I have a great relationship with our state rep, our senators in Foxborough, even stretching back to my time in Hanover. That's, that relationship is invaluable, whether it's sort of just open office hours in town hall or in the senior center, but having that constant communication, even if it means you're sort of taking 20 minutes and just having a quick, what are they up to? What are the next projects that they have? And how can the town help them? But also, so it can be mutually beneficial, how can they help us at the same time?
Do you have any questions for the next question?
I haven't been here long enough. I grew up in town. I know everybody knows each other. That's changing somewhat, but for the most part, yeah, it's, it's just like that community. It's a small one, and I think you're familiar with what I'm referring. I don't really have the words. Appreciate it.
Well, if I may, just if I may, I mean, up until two years ago, Brenna, you weren't really involved.
No.
Here you...
That's what I mean. I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, yep.
Do you have any other questions for us?
I don't. No, I really appreciate it. Thank you for the opportunity. I really, really appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent. Well, very nice to have you here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you again.
Nice meeting you. I won't step on the table.
It has to come out anyway.
Nice meeting you. Thank you.
Good candidate.
Yeah. So, at this point, this board can discuss, okay, the finalist candidates' interviews, comments, and possibly vote for a point. We can designate a select board member to negotiate a contract, whether or not we do appoint this evening. So, I think that the subcommittee brought two really amazing town candidates.
I was going to say, Madam Chair, that, you know, we had a lot of conversation, a lot of worry, a lot of, that we weren't going to be able to bring. We wanted to bring more than two, because we didn't want to lose someone. At the end of the, Maureen, jump in anytime, at the end of the interviews, the screening interviews the other day, we were absolutely confident that the two folks we were bringing forward were just such great candidates, and I think that, you know, this is an anomaly, actually. They're both really, you know, would be really good fits in Lakeville, so...
I couldn't agree more. I think we have a very hard but great problem in front of us.
Yes.
To choose between two really great candidates, who bring a lot of similarities, but some differences, too. So, you know, I'm just very excited that, you know, this is our, this is our choice.
Yep.
Yeah.
Maureen, any comments?
I'm happy that we're here. Two very good candidates that also are very different in their own regards. So, it's the, this is the awful part, to be honest.
Yes, it really is.
Two very different pasts, two I would consider similar but different skill sets. I think it's more about trying to figure out which of these both very good skill sets does Lakeville need with its current challenges going through the next few years.
Brenna, do you have something?
No, like I told Leah, they were great candidates. I don't know. Are we, are we doing the full deliberation in open session?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Are we doing more comments? Like, is this an open, I'm sorry, are we, like, all doing a comment and then going back into it, or is this like that?
This is at that point.
This is the point.
So, yeah.
I think they were great. I think where Andrew is coming from, Andrew was a townie in Middleborough, so he's very much familiar with the towns, like how he said, "You know about your neighbor town." Came from Middleborough, where they recently got that farm, they've done a lot of grants, like we talked about, he's big in CPI. I really liked some of his ideas, where was it? The permitting process? I liked that, like, he seemed, he seemed very good at communicating, the way he described it, how he could interact with everybody. And then, whoops, the other part. And he acknowledged some of the problems that Lakeville's having, in terms of generating the money and what's going on with the development and the builders. And then you had Mark. And Mark, they're both go-getters, but Mark seems like a very go-getter. His essay talked about a lot of projects he initiated. There was that personal story about the senior center. I feel like if people are dealing with burnout, he is someone that could get them started again. I don't know. I think they're both great candidates, but I'm going to pass it to Leah.
I, I feel the same way. I feel like they, they both answered questions in the screening process very similarly, although they do both have completely, not completely, but different styles. And after meeting them, I did find myself all weekend long, when I was thinking about, you know, the work we were doing this week, as just town work, actually wondering what each one of them would think about it. So, it's like I've already, you know, I respect both candidates so much that I would like their opinion on, you know, some of the stuff we're already working on. So, I agree, this is a brutal decision to have to make.
If we hired both of them, they'd get the work done of like 10 people.
Yeah. At least, at least.
I would agree on that.
So, he's got a coin.
Couple more comments, if I may. Did somebody else get cut off? I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I mean, I think when we look at the last few years here, we've seen the expansion of the board, we've seen, you know, the recall provision that's gone through, we've heard people say communication is, you know, is very tough in town. Everybody says more transparency, but, you know, that's just a key word everybody's going to use. I feel like Mark has slightly more, what I would say, managerial experience, and I think some of the roles in, because I also look at the town administrator essentially almost as like your press secretary and your PR person at the same time. And going through the essay and the resume and some of the things he touched on tonight, I feel like he's probably a little stronger in that community engagement side, where I think the town is lacking right now. Whereas Andrew's got some outstanding skills in other areas that we also don't have in town right now.
Yeah.
But I feel like our current challenges are leaning a little more towards communication, clarity, engagement. You know, having that person, like you said, wants to be at the events. We haven't seen that in the past years.
I agree with that edge that you're talking about for Mark, on the communication and the, in the leadership portion. I do say that Andrew has some strengths in some of the land that Mark does not have, which, again, land strength would be great for anyone in the role, but I think the leadership one edges out the land for me, if I had to make a decision on which is the most important part right now for this position.
I would agree, because we have, we are going through that with the planning board, where they're looking for their consultant, and they have, so that could be an advantage that we might have gotten with Andrew, but where Mark is lacking.
Would be able to put in, where it belongs for us is in that planning role, yeah. That's a good point.
I think that a lot of the questions, you know, that we were asking was driving and hearing more about their communication style. And we know, because we do hear it every day, "I didn't know about that," or, you know, "There's got to be a better way to get the information out, and, you know, at what point do you get the information out?"
do you get the, get the information out? So it's always been, communication's always been a hot topic or, you know, hot potato. But I think that the way we asked the questions tonight gave us an opportunity to really hear what their communication style is like. So I think they definitely had some good ideas. I'm sitting here trying to picture both of, you know, as you did Leah over the weekend, but I definitely think that, you know, Mark having, you know, 22 years in municipal, you know, kind of working in various areas gives him a little bit more, I guess, perspective or more flavor to, you know, some of what goes on, the everyday stuff too.
And I was impressed, not that this is end-all-be-all, but I was impressed that when we were given the questions from him and everybody gave an answer, as soon as the fifth person was done responding, there was follow-ups to each one immediately with pointed things.
Communication style.
So you got, you got five very different personalities up here with five different answers they gave him and immediately there was a thoughtful response to each one. Some pretty good time slicing in his brain.
Okay.
It's like to make a motion.
Go right ahead.
Does everyone feel comfortable?
Yeah.
I didn't think that would be tonight, but I think after this process, I am.
My motion, I would like to make a motion to hire Mark Craig as our next town administrator pending negotiations. Do you have the wording so I can not flood this? I move the board make a conditional offer of employment to Mark Craig for the position of Lakeville Town Administrator. Said offer to be conditioned upon the successful completion of all necessary background checks, investigations, and the successful negotiation of the terms of employment by the select board.
Second. There's a motion and a second on the floor. Further discussion?
I feel so bad for Andrew because he is so excited for this opportunity.
He's wonderful. I, yeah, I agree.
Need to create another position.
I know, I know. Come up with some extra dough.
No, this is exciting.
It is exciting.
Any more discussion?
We're going to always bop.
All right. Roll, please.
I'll call vote. Fabian, aye.
Don Hugh, aye.
Carboni, aye.
Candido, aye.
Day, aye.
Okay. All right.
Oh, there's a second part?
Yes.
Of the motion?
Yes.
I'll make it because I have the piece of paper in front of me. I'm, oh, we actually need to...
You need to...
Yep. So at this point, we need a delegate from this board.
I'll volunteer if no one else is interested.
Tribute. I was going to say the same thing that you said at first, so...
Would you like to negotiate?
To negotiate with them.
I don't really want to do that.
All right. So the motion would be, well, I'm not going to make it, but do I hear a motion?
I move that the board authorize board member Maureen Candido to conduct negotiations with Mark Craig over the terms of employment within parameters to be established by the board and subject to final approval by the board of any final negotiating...
Second. All right. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No, we will talk about parameters and everything in the executive session and if we could just get frequent updates depending on how long or whatever, that's all.
I'll put a timeline and I'll update the board periodically and then we will talk about it in session to make sure anything that I've talked about with him is already approved by the board, so we don't have any surprises and everything is completely transparent as is our custom.
Yes.
Excellent.
All right. Any further discussion?
Do we need to ask anybody to notify him?
Well, Lacey, yeah, Lacey will notify, yeah, the search committee, so they will reach out to the candidate, they'll reach out to both candidates.
Unless they're still here.
Yeah.
No, no, I spoke to them both on the way up. They know that I'll be contacting the government, but we'll speak with them tonight.
Yep.
All right. No more discussion? Roll, please.
Fabian, aye.
Don Hugh, aye.
Carboni, aye.
Candido, aye.
Day, aye.
And Madam Chair, if I may, I make a motion that we go, is that it? Are we done?
I, yeah, I think that we are all set in open session this evening. So yes, if you'd like to...
So I make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to general law, chapter 30A, 21A2, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the new town administrator, and not to return to open session.
All right. Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, roll, please. JB and I.
Don Hugh, aye.
Carboni, aye.
Candido, aye.
Day, aye.
Okay, we are in executive session.
Very excited.
Have a good day.